Good evening, welcome to the October 20, 2014 meeting of the Medfield School Committee. I apologize, we ran a little bit late in the executive session this evening. We do have a full agenda this evening, approval of several minutes. New business to hear from the High School Advisory Council, so it's good to have them here. The English Department is going to present, High School English Department is going to make a presentation. We vote to accept a gift from the Memorial School CSA and vote to appoint a member to the Accept Collaborative, is that right?
That's me.
That's you, congratulations.
Thank you.
A couple of old business items, we're going to revisit subcommittees. We're going to formally approve and execute a couple of collective bargaining agreements, and then Dr. Morrison will have his report to the committee. So with that, Aileen, minutes.
Yeah, I reviewed the minutes from the April 7th, 2014 regular meeting, the April 28th regular meeting, May 19th regular meeting, June 2nd regular meeting, and the June 2nd executive session meeting, and I move that they be approved as submitted. Seconded?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Mazel tov. Dr. Martin.
High School Student Advisory, Andy, why don't you start us off being the upper class person?
That's a defining metaphor.
True. Andy is never going to let you, he's not, I'm sure he's got some kind of presentation planned, there's a song and a dance routine, you can't go off-
There probably is a song in here.
You can't go off book, Andy, that's not fair to-
Tormi'd like to do a song. Jordan, do you want to start?
I'll go with that.
Way to be a leader, I mean.
Hi, I'm Jordan Warchecky, and since I'm the newest addition to Medfield High's reps, I wanted to share a brief overview of what my class of 2018 is like, and some of what my fellow officers and I are looking forward to do this year. To begin with, the class of 2018 is one I am very proud to represent. We are a group of kind and inconsiderate kids that have gotten an amazing chance to kick off the new change in learning. We are the first class to be given the opportunity to bring our own devices to school. Unlike the class before me, we all have the same device, an iPad, which opens up many new possibilities for our learning environment. It allows us to collaborate with students outside of school and speed up our activities in school. My class is also the newest at Medfield High, which means that we have had to find our way around and get used to the new environment. I'm confident that it has been nothing but a positive experience for me and my classmates. The iPads have made a very, a very big difference, too, because instead of having to learn how to use them this year, and being new to the movement, we are now all relatively comfortable and able to use our time to the greatest advantage and highest productivity level. Thank you, and I look forward to giving you more updates on the class of 2018.
Thank you. Tommy, ready?
There would be more irony in that presentation if she was reading from paper.
Hello again, everyone. I'm Thomas Cadman, the sophomore representative to the school committee. This year, my class has begun selling chocolate bars and Otis Spunk Meyer cookies to raise money for our class and to pay for prom, which is coming up real soon, so that's going really well. Also, BYOD is going very well this year. I think all the teachers are using it in class to, we all use Google Drive to, like, share documents back and forth, so everything is graded online, so you never really hand in a hard copy anymore, so that, that's kind of nice. Also, my student government is in the process of designing sweatpants that will say, like, "Medfield Warriors," and then the logo, and we'll, we both, we will be selling that schoolwide, just to try to raise a lot of money, so that, that's coming up real soon. Also, this year, we have transitioned from Edline into Aspen, and I think it's going pretty well so far. There's been a few techno- technological errors with the parents not be able, not being able to go on and see their, like, students, their child's, like, reports, but I think as soon as that gets fixed up, it will work, like, smooth. Since we have not finished the fundraisers, I don't have a certain amount of money to tell you that we've raised, but in the future, when, once I, once I get that information, I will be, I will be sharing it with you. Thank you, everyone.
Have you read the Chocolate War? Have you read the Chocolate War?
No.
It's a book about selling chocolates for school. Came to mind when you said you were selling candy bars. Mrs. Allen is what?
Hello again, I'm Erin Banker, and I'm the representative for the junior class. So our main focus this year is prom, which is, it's still a ways away in May, but we still have to, like, keep thinking about it. We started a prom committee, and we had our first meeting last Thursday, and we had a big turnout, there was about like thirty kids, and we even had some boys show up, so that was exciting. We're just kind of brainstorming themes that we can, like, start getting decorations and stuff for. A lot of people seem to like, like, the theme, like Candyland or something, so you can do, like, different, like, candies as dessert, and, like, cool centerpieces, but we're still brainstorming. Our next meeting, we're thinking to elect a president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer, so, like, the meetings will run smoother, and there'll just be, like, more order to that. Another thing we're doing is t-shirts for sale for the whole school, and we're thinking, instead of the officers designing it, we'd have a whole school contest, and, like, people can submit a design, and then we pick a winner, and they will get a free t-shirt, and we're thinking about long sleeve t-shirts maybe for the winters when it gets colder. Also, there's BYOD for juniors and seniors, so that's pretty exciting, but only for, like, certain people, like, I'm in a Latin class, so there's, there are sophomores in it, so we can bring a device, and, but if you don't have a device, like, you can bring in, you can, like, get a device, so I have, the school gave me a Nexus, I don't know if you know what that is, it's made by Google, it's like an iPad or tablet, but there's some different things on it, so we're getting used to that and using it, because we've never used it, but you only use it in your class that you have, like, the different grades in unless your teacher lets you, so sometimes it's easy and you can bring it home. I like it, but like, maybe be too much for every class, so it's just a nice little mix. So, yeah, that's pretty much all that's happening now.
Erin, did you tell us in the spring where, where's prom this year?
It's at Gillette Stadium.
Thank you.
I am Andy, AKA Andrew, AKA Malice B. Bower, and I am the representative for the senior class, of which I and JJ are both a part. And so we kicked off the year with a strong start with the senior cruise, which was, oh my god, so much fun, like, I didn't even almost fall off the boat, which I was expecting to happen, because it's happened before, but I didn't, it was fine, I didn't even drop anything over the edge, and everyone danced, and it was a lot of fun, a great bonding experience for our grade. And speaking of experiences for our grade, we had a lot of yearbook forms to do with our senior bios, and our Can You Imagins, and the seniors' superlatives, some pretty tough decisions, not going to give anything away, but JJ would definitely want to know. And, no, that was, sorry, I got a little off agenda there. And this week is Spirit Week, you may be wondering, what's with the stuff on my eyes? And that is because today was Color Day, and seniors were supposed to wear black, and tomorrow is Hippie Day, and then we've got Holiday on Wednesday, Superhero Day on Thursday, and of course Warrior Pride Day on Friday, and also on Friday is the Pep Rally, which is the culmination of the week and the greatest point of the entire year, it's pretty much all downhill from there. And where will us find out who these superlatives are?
Got that to look forward to, Jordan.
And elsewhere in the school, the Fall Show is going pretty well, November 7th and 8th, go see it, I'm the star, and we're getting into hardcore rehearsals, Tech Week is coming up, and that's going to be a blast. It's going to be other things, but it's also going to be a blast. And we recently cast, last week, Thursday, we cast the One Acts, which Tommy is in. And, not mine though, ah, and so that is a fun time, it's a good way for all the grades, people who've never done anything in drum before to get involved. You two, you should, you two, you should do it next year. And also, as seniors, we have lots of college stuff going on, and the only way to accurately reflect that is on my agenda where it just says, "Ahhhhh," because that's really all I can say about it, it is a lot of stuff, and it's stressful, but we're all banking on, we're all bank hurting on a few months from now, when it'll all be over, and we can just, like, relax and know where we're going, and finally let senioritis sink in. That's off the record. Totally off the record, especially for any, any teachers of mine that are in this room. I'm, I'm going to be Kafkaing until, like, June, don't worry. And that's really all I have to say today, besides you people are all looking very nice this evening, and you've been a wonderful audience, except for JJ today.
Andy, what's the fall play?
The fall play is the man who came to dinner.
Actually, we think Andy was going to give our presentation.
It's really the entertainment.
I mean, I'm just saying, when I was a freshman, I had to go first, when Tommy was a freshman, he had to go first, when Erin was a freshman, she had to go first.
It has been quite a treat to watch their development, particularly Andy's, I would like to see.
Maturation of Andy, yes.
I didn't say, I did not say maturation, did I?
So, Mr. Chair, our next item is the English Department project presentation. Over the summer, English Department worked really hard on a great project that links vocabulary and literature, and Gail Duffy, the content specialist, came to me a couple of weeks ago and presented what they had done, and it was really, really fantastic, so we thought it'd be great for them to come here, present to us, and give you an opportunity to ask any questions if you have them. Okay.
Well, thanks for having us here tonight. We think it's, we think one of the fun parts about teaching is actually to create delivery that works, we hope. Probably some of you remember the Sadler-Oxford orange books that have been used since dinosaurs roam the earth. What happened was those, those books were kind of separate from what students remembered and what they learned, so we decided we'd design a whole new system, we did a lot of research, about how to make this vocabulary delivery, which is part of the Common Core, actually mean something, so students would own the words rather than kind of rent them. So we took Sadler-Oxford, and we said goodbye to it, and we developed, and we actually became sort of our own company, and created, all that you know about Sadler-Oxford, we sort of recreated on our own, we went to every piece of literature, okay, I guess we're, okay, oh, we switched, okay, we went to every piece of literature, and what happens is that we really think that this vocabulary system will help students, the words are taken directly from the vocabulary that they read, so if they were reading Most Dangerous Game, all the words, the teachers went in and gathered those words, and then created assessments. So what did we create? What we created, not just we, because I'll be telling you about who created it in a minute, but we created this vertical curriculum that goes from grade six all the way through grade 12, that we created forty units of instruction. Each unit of instruction has forty words, has a handout that goes to every student studying that piece of literature, and we created 106 online assessments. Each assessment has fifty words, I mean fifty questions to it, so just in terms of the airspace, the cloud space that we take up with this, it's pretty huge, and you'll be able to get a look at what this, what each of these tests look like, because students take them online, and they're going to be talking about, this is Beth Sanchar.
As Gail mentioned, this project runs right from grade six through grade 12, which means we had all the middle school teachers and the high school teachers working independently, but collaboratively on this task, and it was quite an arduous task, but being word people, it was rather fun for us. So, there were twenty-three of us in total, and what we did, we took, we went straight to the literature, we found the words that were the most meaningful, in some cases, they may have been words we had to cut out, in some we had to go back and find words that students use in everyday language that would be meaningful to them, and then we went about then creating the assignment, and then from the assignment sheet, we created the assessment, and we created various formats then of the assessment in the high school for the different leveling, the ones in the, in the middle school are the same. So our goal was to have all of the assessments follow the same format, and for many of us that meant learning new technology, because we put them on Google Drive. So, as we mentioned, we had a twenty-three-ounce octopus, so we wanted to see whether this octopus could actually dance, whether we could actually successfully execute it, and yes, we did. Yes, we can. So there was a successful student rollout, and the ninth graders have taken two of the vocab tests as of today, so the tenth graders have taken them, and the eleventh and twelfth graders have also. So this has synced well with the ninth and tenth graders because of the iPad initiative, as well as in the middle school as well, so the students have been able to take them directly on their iPad, we've been, we give them a link, they can click on to the link, they can take it and submit it, and the results come straight back to us. So the benefit of this is that students are familiar with the words that they're, they're words that they actually use, whereas we found in Sadler-Oxford, some of the words were redundant, they weren't words that students used anymore. So we wanted to make it so that not only did they understand the words, that they understood them contextually, and were able to get a deeper meaning then from them. So, show you one of the live forms. So in our meetings, we decided that each grade would have a different theme, so there not be any confusion as to what the test format looked like, so this is a ninth grade model. One of the members of the department created a model, which we all then followed, so all of the tests are of the exact same format, they all ask for a student's name, the teacher's name, and then it follows through with the format of the test. We have three different sections, the first being part of speech, then we have a word definition, and we gave them a word bank, so that it's not about memorizing the spelling of the words, but more the definition of the words. We made all the questions required, so that they had to answer them. And then the last part, then, the students had to use the words in context, so they're directly lifted from the text, so students can actually say, "Oh, I remember reading that word in that sentence." So we're hoping that our goal was met, so.
So kind of with this, one of the great things is, you know, we are able to schedule who's going to use this form, because it's a live form, we can turn it off and turn it on, so we have test integrity, it's also great if a student is absent, because it's a Google form, because it's something that exists in the cloud, and they can get it at any point, they're getting the same test experience that their peers did, so it's wonderful for that. The other amazing thing is this add-on called Fluburu, which sounds like some combination of, like, you know, fluff and peanut butter or something, but it's this wonderful grading program that, what we can do, so I have about eighty-five ninth graders, Beth has, you know, forty, and we can collect the data via the Google form, it's housed in the form responses, Fluburu grades all of them at once. We create a common key, and I get my students' data, Beth gets hers, Emery Fralillo gets hers, and so on and so forth. And with that, the time-saving is incredible, so you're able to give really quick feedback to students, it's in a meaningful time period where they're still involved in the curriculum, and they can see, "How did I do on this?" But the great thing is with collaboration, this has really fostered some incredible discussions, where we can look at the data, and we can say, "Among all C1 ninth graders, wow, question eighteen just seemed to give seventy percent of them trouble." Let's look at what's happening in question eighteen, was it something where, was the word just so abstract that they had trouble with it? Was it the way the sentence was structured, that it was really almost ambiguous as to what vocabulary word should go in there? And it's created some really deep, meaningful conversations about what are our assessments, really, how are they doing, how are our students performing on them, what can we target as areas of concern, and really kind of do a little bit of bonus work on before the next assessment, and is there something we want to tweak about our review, or about the assessments? And it's really been something that we're only two quizzes in, but we're all really jazzed about it, the students seem to enjoy the experience, they appreciate, I think, that we are able to talk as a department about this, and say, "Hey, all ninth graders are doing this, you're in it together, and we're looking at it as a department." And we've really just found it to be a wonderful change.
One more little addition I think to note is that, I think the vocabulary, most of us, we were really unanimous that this wasn't working, it felt sort of like an aged person that we were sort of coddling along, and so we really think that this will actually make them better critical readers, and ultimately better critical writers. It's not a panacea, it's not a, you know, a wonder pill, but it actually connects the words they're learning with the literature they're reading, so to us, it was a win-win. We hope it will be for the whole school.
It seems to be. So thank you very much for giving us the space tonight, and we're excited about vocabulary.
Any questions?
Just one quick question there. So I've seen the Sadler-Oxford octopus in my house for years, but I was just kind of wondering, like, I know that they're probably a little bit archaic, but I think they have a lot of SAT vocabulary, so how are you guys bridging that into this new?
Well, actually, the SAT is changing as of next year, and the way the SAT is actually moving forward is they are using more-
Literature-based.
Literature-based words, words that students need in a job setting, in a college setting. So we found that this was meant to purposes, that it went with the progression of all the SAT and ACT as well.
Great.
And if we ever do move to park assessments, that's how they're going to be assessing kids as well, so taking-
Absolutely, inside the literature.
Right, taking words from the literature and then seeing what the meaning is.
So is this kind of, I think this is brilliant, thank you very much, this was a lot of work, I imagine, but in terms of, I'm almost thinking this is a pilot, in a sense that then maybe the elementary would look at this kind of approach to vocab learning versus the spelling connection books.
How do you really feel?
We think it becomes organic learning versus-
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Something that feels very separate and a kind of add-on.
It's in context, yes, yeah.
And I think we thought of this idea before, but the task seems so big, but I think the time was right, and really it can be done. I think it takes wonderful people, willing to work lots of hours, but also a district that supports that work, which was very, very helpful to us, and, and there are a few hiccups along the line, but we'll work them out, because here's a philosophy about education that grew legs and a heart, instead of becoming this thing we know doesn't work, but we keep doing it. So I really think there's a lot of good, and I think that it definitely can be done at the elementary school, and I'm happy to talk to anybody who'd like me to talk to, because I'm an apostle of this, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, thank you, great job.
Do you want me to log on, or do you need the exit? You're logged on.
Okay.
I think you're logged on.
I'm logged on, I can take her out, thank you.
Dr. Martin.
Memorial CSA gift, one of the things that we'd like to start doing, Michael, I've been talking to Jessica and I, and a conversation of how we can start tracking some of the money that, that the Coalition or the PTO, the CSAs that they provide us and the support, because they do an awful lot for us. And, you know, there are lots of districts out there that each month, the school committee will approve some of these donations as gifts, so we'd like to start getting into the habit of doing that, because we want to make sure that everyone understands the impact that these organizations have in the district, and that way we can track that as well, so we can say that when we're around budget time, we're saying that we're asking for X amount, well, I think we talked a little bit about it last year, even though the budget is twenty-nine million, it really costs thirty-two million to run the district as you see it, with grants, tuitions, et cetera, and now this piece will be added to that as well, so we get a real good sense of what the actual cost is to run the district. So I would ask that you, you approve the memorial gift, CSA gift of a hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty-nine cents, so that they could buy a Bose speaker system for the gym, and they're going to be using that in phys ed classes, so I'd ask that you approve that.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
So Jeff, sorry, so for all the grants essentially, that the CSA and the PTO and the Coalition, so say, for example, the Coalition approves a grant, then we therefore have to approve that?
Well, accept it as a donation to the district.
Okay.
It's, it's more symbolic.
Right, right, because it is important to see the bottom line that they add to us.
It's important to do, it's symbolic, but also to kind of keep track of all that.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that we have, we have a record of it in the minutes.
Yeah, okay, all right, that's smart, thanks.
Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is the Collaborative Board Member. This is a yearly appointment that the committee must do, I am the member of the Accept Collaborative Board, and I would ask that you vote to approve to continue to have the number four.
Nominated, will you serve?
I will serve, absolutely.
Your motion.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I think. All business, one of the school committee's, subcommittee, policy subcommittee.
Mary Ann, I think, want me to take care of that, or you guys want to speak on that? I can do that, or I have it all right here?
Yeah, we can do everything.
So, so last week, Mary Ann, I think, and I met to go over some of the school committee policies that our attorneys had sent back to us for review, we looked at doing the entire policy board, this is only a third policy book, this is only a third of our policies right now, but they did highlight some that were out of compliance, so as a group, we sat down, went through it, made recommendations, and I want to bring it back to the committee tonight, because I think in November, we should start going through these policies, and I believe you're, you have, you have to vote twice in your, in your policy to make policy. So a lot of people are, are getting the policies up to speed, like, for instance, the harassment policy and others that, that were written probably in the mid-nineties, need to be updated based on law changes, et cetera, so we've been through that, but we'll like to put that on the agenda for November if that works for, for the committee.
Great, maybe I was just an example, didn't we just update the harassment policy in connection with the bullying policy last year, or two years ago?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
But I know that was one that they picked up, yeah, they picked up one. So then we'll send another third of the policies after we get through these, and the final third, just to go through, but I think it's, as we talked about last year, a good idea to go through those and just make sure they're in compliance with the law, and, and we don't want to be in a situation where our policies are out of compliance.
We looked, two years ago, I think, at a piece of software that would put our, all policies online, and it was too expensive for, in a tight budget environment, is there, are our policies online, can somebody get to the policies that are not sort of in the handbook?
They're not online yet, I think, once, once we finish the upgrade and the updates on these, we'll be able to put it online, I had it in my former district, it really wasn't a huge deal.
Yeah, there was, it was an off-the-shelf product, I think, it might have even been this, MASC was trying to sell us.
Okay.
I think our, the way our website's been redesigned, it's probably a lot easier just to get it up there.
We had live links on it, and we could just, we could hit any, any area you wanted to look at, personnel, students, et cetera, get a camera out, so we should be able to do that.
Great. Collective bargaining agreement?
So this is the, the final vote of ratification of the three out of the four collective bargaining agreements, we have copies for the chair to sign afterwards, but there've been a couple of grammatical changes since our last meeting, but essentially, everything that I presented to you last time remains the same, so I'd ask that you would support those CBAs.
So they need to be voted separately, or can we vote them all at once?
Probably separately.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the cap tier collective bargaining agreement?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, is there a motion to approve the custodian maintenance collective bargaining agreement?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, and is there a motion to approve the secretary of collective bargaining agreement?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. It's good to have those done.
Yes, thank you, appreciate that. So my reports to the committee have been MCAS report for the first one, we just set that up on a computer, if I may.
Take it.
This is an overview of our 2014 MCAS, remember, last year, we went through each, each park, so we'll go through each grade level, each area, and then I'll ask questions, just stop me if you want clarification or anything, but just, you know, basic overview, criterion reference test, MCAS, combination, multiple choice, short answers, and open response, administered in grades three, four, five, six, seven, eight, ten, if you remember, the original MCAS were only for eight and ten, grades five, eight and ten have science, and in 2013, the infusion of the Common Core concepts began to appear in MCAS, so they appeared in every single grade level in the 2013 test. So our performance areas, just in case, you know, just a review of what they are, advanced scores are two sixty to two eighty, our proficient are two forty to two fifty-eight, needs improvement two twenty to two thirty-eight, and our warning score is two hundred to two eighteen. But this is something I always put in on, on our MCAS presentation, I think it's important for folks to remember that, you know, Sengat wrote this in nineteen ninety, ultimately the learning organization must be ju- organization must be judged by its results. So, I think it's important that we focus on our results and keep our eye on the ball there, because it's just so important. Even though MCAS is a snapshot, it's a pretty important snapshot for our district. Couple of things to remember as I go through this, and if you only see this once a year, then you forget what these terms mean, but two very important ones as we go through this process. Composite performance index, or the CPI, if a student receives an advanced or proficient, then they are assigned 100 points. If they receive a high needs improvement, so the higher end of needs improvement is 75 points, low needs improvement is 50, warning is zero. So, then you take all the kids and assign them those points, divide by the number of kids, and you'll see what the composite performance index is, and as we go through that, if we go through the presentation, you'll see, we want to be in the mid-'90s. Mid-'90s is a great place for us to be. We're not there in all of our grade levels, but when you think of that in terms of, you know, over 90 is good, but really, the sweet spot for us is in the mid-'90s. Student growth is another really important one. That's a cohort comparison of kids, so let me give you an example. If you are a student in grade three, and you score 246 on the MCAS language arts test, you are put in a cohort of every kid in the state that scored 246. The next year, you take language arts, MCAS, and you get a score. Your comparison is not just to kids at Medfield, but every other kid that you were in that cohort with a 246. So, that's how you get the student growth number, and they calculate that for every single student from fourth grade on, just not in science, but in math and language arts. So, that's a really good, I guess, measure, it's a good measure of what impact did that particular year have on the student? Could it be the teacher, could it be the learning? You know, those are all questions to bring up, but that really provides the student growth impact for that previous year. The median on this is 50, so the government is telling us that they want growth between 40 and 60. That's what they're looking at for moderate growth. Anything below 40, we're not so happy with, anything above 60, that's great, but 50 is that dead even, that's average growth. So, looking at the district view, this is the percent of students over the last few years that have advanced and proficient, so that's really what we're looking for. We want kids to be advanced or proficient. Starting in 2009, you see our language arts scores, they remain fairly flat, you know, we have 86, 86, good numbers, but flat, not much of a variance there, you'll see a range of, you know, 86 to 88. Our math scores, again, you'll see those comparable in terms of the difference, you might say, well, gee, we're in the 80 percentile in language arts, but the 70s in math, that's pretty consistent statewide, that language arts scores are higher than math scores. And you'll see that, it's fairly consistent, but a nice little bump there this past year, so a 4%, but again, fairly consistent, I mean, not a lot of movement there. I put on the bottom, you remember me last year saying that, excuse me, I wouldn't even consider the state numbers when we're looking at comparison, because I feel like we should be way above the state. So, just to point a context for this, the state was 69%, so plus 17 this year, and the state here is 60, plus 19, that gives you a sense of, you know, where we are compared to the state district-wide. So, let's outlook at results. So, starting with grade three, I know it might be a little small for you, I actually have a presentation that's, it's, the copies are there, Chris, if you want to pass them out there, right? You get a sense of where we are in terms of advanced, proficient, a warning, you know, that's a pretty good number. Everything in the low 90s in third grade, the first time they take that test in language arts, that's a good number, you know, mid-'90s. Real nice number in advanced this past year, 27% of our kids, and then half of our kids proficient. Still concerned about that, when you look at almost a quarter of your kids that needs improvement, and you know, that, you know, what's going to change then, I think? I think that, you know, having full day kindergarten, having more instruction with those kids in the lower grades, because this third grade test isn't a test of third grade, it's a test of preschool of third grade. So, this gives us a real good sense of what our kids are doing, coming out of memorial and into WeLAN. It's an exam of all three years. This has been fairly consistent here, and our warning number went down a lot, a 1% there, that's a good number. But again, if you're in the low to mid-'90s, third grade reading, first time up, that's a good number to have. Mathematics, you'll see, again, two years in a row of really strong numbers in mathematics, 45% of our kids advanced, 40% in the proficient level, 13 in needs improvement, and then 2% in warning, again, hovering around that mid-'90s, so two years in a row, getting close to that mid-'90s in the CPI, those are really good numbers, so we're pleased with that. The trend is definitely where we want it to be in mathematics, and you'll see that as we get into other grade levels as well. There's been a big push the last couple of years with professional development in mathematics, and we continue that again this year, so we're pretty happy with that. Grade four, so grade four is when we start to get into our student growth numbers. So, they calculate that third grade test for the first time, and then go into fourth grade. So, you see our language arts numbers here, only 12% advanced, 57% proficient, again, fairly consistent. You know, that's a little concerning there, see, you have a quarter of your kids that needs improvement. CPI below 90, and, you know, this was very low compared to other years here, 37. So, what we're saying is, when we say a student growth percentage of 37, we're saying there's a heck of a lot of kids that did better than our kids from year to year. So, that's the third grade to fourth grade score. So, we'd like to have this number here, like we said, over 50, over 60s grade, 50 is average. Getting into mathematics, 28% of our kids advanced, up 12% from the previous two years, 41% of our kids are proficient, again, there's a quarter of our kids needs improvement. Now, you dig that down, you dig a little deeper on that, and you start to see, well, we, you know, a lot of these kids missed it by one or two questions. You know, you start looking at the IOM analysis, and you start to see that this 26%, if they got one or two questions correct, they're over here in the 41% numbers. There's not a lot of kids that are below needs improvement at Medfield, a lot of them are very high needs improvement kids.
So, Jeff, what is, what have you, or have you attributed that drop from 62 to the 37 in the student growth?
Well, I mean, sometimes it's anomaly with the group of students, sometimes it's just the instruction that year, you have to really take a look at more than one year on this. If I start to see trends of this, of back-to-back 30s, then we always see, look at what's going on curriculum-wise and instructional-wise.
Okay.
But, I mean, it really-
This seems like a big drop, between 54, then 62 bumped up, then it went way down.
Right.
Well, advanced is really funny to look at, to the English- Yeah, like 12%. 2019, down to 12, it seems funny.
But you'll see that, but then advanced in math goes up 12%.
Right.
For the same group of kids.
So, what was going on?
Right, so you gotta take a look at, know what that looks like. I have to tell you that, when we look at the grades, excuse me, we look at the percentages in the CPIs district-wide, we're well above the state on a lot, but there are a couple areas we're not. Fourth and fifth grade, we're not well above the state, in fact, some areas are almost aligned with the state, and in 10th grade, we're not well above the state either, we do grade, but everyone else does grade too in 10th grade. So, you know, I think, you know, those are the areas that we're not above, way above the charts in terms of the state numbers. Grade five, start looking at our advanced, again, fairly consistent, 26, 26, 24, consistent here in the 50s. And that CPI, again, over 90, like to have it a little bit higher, closer to 95, and that's pretty average growth. It's considered moderate growth by Department of Education, but when you're looking at the average, that's how they sway it to 50 as the average in terms of that growth. And mathematics, again, a nice jump there with 11% increase in mathematics, advanced, 30, 20, and then again, we're still below that 90, and we have been for the last couple of years. And we looked at that data in 2011, 2010, below 90 there as well, but nice growth number there, really nice growth number. Anytime you're over 60, that's excellent growth, so, you know, we're happy about that. So, we're getting to science and technology for the first time in grade five. You see our numbers here, and this is when we're pretty close or a little bit below the state here. So, we're not in great shape in terms of science, technology in grade five. You'll see that they don't calculate growth, but you see our CPIs have always been below 90, so we need to do some work there. That, in a community like this, that should be higher, the science, technology should be higher.
And I have a question, the science and technology that's tested is K through 5 science, so it's all elementary science, right?
Correct. It is, that's correct.
So, if we have to beef it up, you have to beef up all elementary science and technology?
That's correct, but the technology piece is not technology computers, it's technology, like engineering technology.
Engineering.
Right, which is your fourth and fifth grade, that's your fourth and fifth grade area there.
Okay. And can you tell, because I know some years heavily technology-based, and some years are not-
No, we're pretty consistent with it. If you look at our CPIs, if we went down to 2011, 2010, you know, we're pretty consistent there.
You'd see the same.
Mid-'80s, high-'80s, we don't break 90 at all in science.
Is there a particular program, we, I mean, I barely remember my kids' fifth grade science curriculum, because I'm not sure there was much of it that went on, is there-
So, we use FOS kits, FOS kits for science, and those are great, I mean, that's a great program, and, you know, you'll see in my later slides, some of the things I suggest. I'm also sure the times are, quite frankly, I'm also sure that kids are doing as much science as they should be doing, and I think that's in the elementary grades. So, I think there's an issue right there that, to me, if you start addressing that in earlier years, and providing them the time and instruction to do all that, then I think you see a change there. Grade six, nice numbers here, you know, 32 advanced, 53, 13 and 3, again, mid-'90s is where we want to be, right, 94.8, and a nice growth number there, so that's great, happy about those numbers there, certainly want to make sure we make some interventions here, but the CPI is telling us, we have a lot of kids that are advanced and proficient, when you're getting CPIs like that. Down in math, see those numbers, 35% advanced, which is a little bit lower than has been in the last couple of years, but the proficient is higher in CPI, 90, again, higher than last year, but not as high as 2012. If you look down to 2011, which isn't there, it was high 90, so it's kind of up and down, up and down, it's not really consistent there in the mathematics. Really want to have these numbers in the single digits, and we're talking about needs improvement, so 18's still a little high.
So, when you talk about needs improvement for those students, are those students that are also falling below benchmark in their grade, or just according to the MCAS, the way that they have tested is below the state?
Right, according to the MCAS. So, one of the things that is an issue is that when MCAS scores don't match up with report card grades, right, that's something that happens in districts across the entire state. So, that's a conversation, are we matching what our instruction and our assessments are with what's going on with MCAS? I think if you're doing MCAS, if you're doing well in MCAS, it should just happen organically, you shouldn't have to practice tests or do any of that, it should just happen. You know, if you have good instruction, good solid curriculum, good assessments, you're going to do well on these tests. But, you know, Mary Ann, some of these kids literally could be one or two questions away from being here, you know, so you kind of dig deeper, then you see that, most of the kids that we have needs improvement are on the high end of needs improvement, that are really one, two, three questions away from being, or if their open response wasn't as high as it could have been, then who's points there? So, we're not far off, you know, we're not far off with a lot of these kids, when you dig deeper on it. To grade seven, grade seven continues to have incredible numbers, the growth numbers are really something here in grade seven. Take a look at the English language arts here, we have 41 and 52, single digits here, I mean, that's what you're looking for, right, single digits and needs improvement and warning, 97 CPI, check out that number, 89, excuse me, 83 growth percentile. I mean, that is really, really high, really high. And they've been consistently high, you see 85 and a half, 73, and you go back to 2011, same type of thing, it's in the 80s. So, you look at the numbers here, again, consistently doing well there, a little bit high here, didn't break 90, but check out that growth number, still really high growth, really high growth. So, not scoring as well as the year before, but better than 2012, but the growth numbers are really high. So, what can you surmise from that? I mean, what can you think about? I mean, let's, can you go back to the previous one? Okay, so we're getting some pretty good growth numbers here, too. So, what we're saying is, so now, we're looking at two years consistently of pretty good growth numbers, and that, those growth numbers are telling us, from point A to point B, it went up this much. There's a lot of growth in seventh and eighth grade, excuse me, sixth and seventh grade, a lot of growth there. Anyone have any theories?
I just have a question.
I know, I know, these test results make me a little crazy, but if you have, when
you have double-digit needs improvement in kids that are in, when I see 9% in the warning category, is the growth identifier skewed, because you could have a bunch of kids who are in the warning and needs improvement that improved slight, that might go up to, you know, a number of the warning kids go up to needs improvement, that's still growth, but they're still not doing well?
Remember, the growth is compared to every other kid in that cohort statewide, all right? So, if a child in seventh grade, or sixth grade, receives a 260, they're put in one big bucket of kids in the state that got 260, and then whatever they get on the next year is compared to all those kids that got 260. So, what that's saying, those growth numbers are saying is, that our kids are improving in sixth and seventh grade-
Faster.
-a lot faster and a lot more than other kids in the state at that level. Because remember, it's everybody together. That's why when you see a 37, it's like, hm, you know, I mean, that's, when we're looking at these numbers, and you start to see the growth numbers in sixth and seventh grade, where you want them to be, and then you see these anomalies that come out of 37, 37, that's telling us a lot, a whole lot of kids in Massachusetts did better than our kids in that particular year.
Okay.
You're talking about grades four and five?
Right.
Yeah, those.
Do you think between the sixth and seventh grade in terms of math, because there is accelerated math, that maybe those are raising the numbers a bit, or?
You know, that's doing it, but just remember, it's the test, too. So, we're only seeing growth on the test, so we're not seeing, we can't then, I like to translate, I like to make that leap and translate it into what's happening in Medfield assessments as well, and you can do that, and you can see it with the local assessments, but this is just one MCAS to the next MCAS. It's not going to compare anything else that we see. It's not taking report cards, it's not taking projects, it's not taking IPads, none of that is, it's just a test to test.
Right, but in terms of the seventh grade, because there's accelerated math, more kids are exposed to higher-level math, working at a faster, more efficient-
So, we level kids, you mean, we're leveling kids?
Yes, 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 yes.
Yeah, that certainly could impact it, no doubt about it, no doubt about it. Again, historically, grade eight, you'll see those growth numbers, not as strong in language arts, certainly not as strong here in mathematics, but you also see really high CPIs, I mean, really high CPIs.
Doesn't seem like you could grow very much from 99.
You see single digits here, and just some real nice numbers all around. Same thing here, you know, CPI, it was trending in the right direction here, we're up to 90, but we have that anomaly again, where we're looking at 50 and 65, and then all of a sudden, we get a 38 in there. So, we, you know, Nat and I haven't had the conversation yet, and he hasn't talked to all the teachers to have those meetings, to kind of get a sense of what their feeling is on this, because they would have a really good feeling on what that would look like. But we have to have that conversation certainly on that. The grade eight science, so, you know, decent numbers proficient-wise, but I think we need to be a little bit more advanced, I mean, no doubt here, a little concerning when you have a third of your class in needs improvement. Okay, and then you start to see the numbers here, not breaking 90 still on those eighth grade science, so we're starting to see a trend there science-wise. I mean, evens out at the end, but we talked about this last year, and we'll talk about But we talked about this last year, and we'll talk about it again tonight, why some of these things even out at the end. Grade ten, okay, you start to see some of the numbers that we have in grade ten, you know, CPIs. Well, we didn't go through some of these, but you know, single digits, um almost hundred percent of our kids advance and proficient. Um unbelievable growth numbers here in math. Um you know, good growth numbers here, had a low one there in Language Arts. Still defined as moderate growth, the forty to sixty. Uh but as we said last year, and I mean, you weren't here last year for this, I don't think, um there's a reason. That, and our kids do really, really well, and if you look at the rankings uh in the Boston Globe where they rank tenth grade, you'll, you'll see all the usual suspects. You'll see Dover Sherwin, you'll see Westwood, you see Medfield, you see Wellesley, you see Needham, um you see all these. But then you see some other communities that kind of make you think a little bit. You start to see uh technical schools in the top, which remember, those kids do some really great work, but on and off academic schedules, not academic all the time. You start to see agricultural schools right up at the top. You see all the charter schools, which, um you know, charter schools might have thirty kids taking the test instead of the two hundred like we have. So you start to see that statewide on the test, ninety, ninety plus are getting proficient, advanced in this test. Do you remember why? We, we talked about this a little bit last year. Remember why that is? Remember JJ, remember why we talked about this? Come on, it's a big test now. So there was a change that happened, and the change was tenth grade MCAS became a graduation requirement. If you look at the scores statewide, Medfield included, you see fairly uh good scores, but nothing like this. You don't see anything like this for a while. Law changes, graduation requirement, and you start to see all of this. And the commissioner recently came out, well, recently last year came out and said, um just in case you don't know this, we have based the tenth grade MCAS scores on eighth grade standards. Because kids need to graduate or there's potentials for lawsuits where, you know, educational malpractice, where you didn't um educate my child, he or she didn't graduate. So i- it's amazing when you see that demarcation zone of scores that are all pretty good, pretty good, and then all of a sudden they're all off the charts again in tenth grade, and that's when the test changed. So the, the test went to an eighth grade standard test. So as much as I, I love the work our high school does, I would expect that from Medfield High School any day of the week, those times, those types of scores.
So do you factor those? Because it seems almost, I don't want to say deceptive, to like factor those into our growth because it is an eighth grade test and tenth graders are taking it.
We have no other way to do it though. That's, the state has made that decision to make it on eighth grade standards, you know. That's why, for me, the US News and World Report numbers that come out, we, we do all of that. To me, that's, that's a real number because that's just based on AP scores, that's all. It's based on participation in kids with three, four, fives in AP. So it's a different measure than this, but it's a real measure. Again, we've, we've seen now grade five and grade eight on this, so now let's see what we got for grade ten. Same kind of thing, real high CPIs. In fact, if you look at the globe this year in the rankings, uh Medfield highs number three in the rankings in the state for science.
You don't have the best science to graduate there, right?
I'm sorry?
Science isn't a graduation requirement?
No.
Is that still eighth grade level?
Yes.
Yes.
Actually, I'm not sure about that. That's a good question. I have, I can check that out. I know it is for Language Arts and Math. I'm not sure if it is for Science. Remember this from last year, the growth numbers. So remember, think of this as a quadrant. Here, we, we draw lines here, whereas this here is the higher, higher growth, higher achievement, lower growth, higher achievement, high growth, lower achievement, and lower growth, lower achievement. We want to be up here. We want to be up in this quadrant up here of higher growth, higher achievement. And this represents a school. So that's the high school. So when you do this online, it's a live link, so you can actually see what school and how many kids are tested. So this is um Language Arts in the high school. This is Language Arts at Blake. It's a bigger circle because more kids have taken the test, because it's sixth, seventh, and eighth grade kids. And then this is Language Arts at Dale, because it's two grades, it's four and five. And then We洛克 doesn't get that number because they don't calculate growth. So high school, oh yeah, high school, Blake, Dale Street. So we want to be in this top quadrant over here, so that's where we like to be. Okay, next one.
So the high school and Dale on that quad, they're in that upper left quadrant.
So fifty.
The only one in the right category.
Line right up here through fifty, they kind of split. Because their growth is between, you know, their growth was, I think, fifty, it's fifty and change, you know, fifty-four, fifty-five. So part of their, part of them are in the higher growth, higher achievement, somewhere in lower growth, higher achievement. So remember, that's average, right? The fifty is the average size. So we want to be up in here, that's where we want to be.
That's even including the tenth grade scores?
Yeah, that's, so the tenth grade scores are here. So there's the higher achievement. So that, this axis here is a percent proficient hi- or higher. So look where we are, we're, we're at like ninety-nine something, right? Ninety-nine point seven or whatever. So we're in the highest here, but our growth number isn't as high to get us that way. But Blake has really high growth, you saw those numbers. So you see they're, they're well into that quadrant. But they're just not as high as up here. So I mean, this is great for Blake. I mean, they're, they're in some good growth numbers, and they're up, they're up in the nineties here.
It's all due to the guidance.
That's right, it's all guidance, all guidance. So here's mathematics. Here is the high school. That is Dale, and that is Blake. Remember those high school numbers of growth were really high? In tenth grade, they were really high growth numbers. Excuse, the high and achievement numbers were really high, they're up here. So we can, we want to have all of our kids up here, high growth, high achievement. And this is right even here, so that's fifty. So you see they're, they're to the right, to the right of fifty. Now we have all this information, so what? Now what do we do, right? How are we going to approach this, and what do we do to improve instruction and learning for our kids? So item analysis, so schools will go through, do item analysis, what are our strengths? What can we do better? Are there trends and what do they reveal? So you start to see some of these trends. Trends to me, two, three years of data. You know, one year's not a trend, a couple of years, that's a trend. Um start looking at grade level department leadership discussions. So one of the things that are really important to us is looking at consistent learning experiences. That's really important. Consistent opportunities for kids to learn. You know, in, in this, and I always use the example of twins. Um when you have twins in a grade level, um anything that is not consistent is exposed very quickly. So work toward consistent opportunities for kids to learn. Common assessments, our departments and grade levels are doing a really good job starting to develop common assessments so that when they, as, as Gail talked about previously, those collaboration, those conversations about, geez, number seventeen was difficult. What could we do better? What did we miss? Did we not frame that correctly? Did we not even discuss it with the kids? So that, that collaboration and those conversations are really important. And the only way you get to that is using common assessments. You gotta do that. So at grade level and department goals, as part of the new evaluation, grade levels and departments are making, are doing goals together. And what will those goals look like? Student-centered goals? It could be, you know, making sure that every kid receives um a two percent increase on whatever they're looking at, whatever assessment they're working on. Or ninety, uh ninety percent of my kids will score a three, four, or five on the particular assessment. So those are the conversations that need to take place and that our, our teachers are working on right now. In terms of curriculum, you know, alignment of curriculum so that it spirals grade to grade, so that it's not something done in isolation, and, and this is really critical for Medfield. It's critical everywhere, but it's really critical for Medfield because of the two-year transitions. Our kids are going, in the initial years, are going two years and then going to the next school, two years, going to the next school, two years, going to the next school. So if it isn't aligned and those conversations aren't taking place, it makes it even more difficult for kids. And if the teachers aren't given time to have those conversations and talk about what the curriculum needs to look like and what that alignment looks like and how we're going to do curriculum instruction consistently across all schools, then that becomes really difficult. And um it's really magnified in Medfield because of our structure. It's not a bad structure, it's just the, the nature of the structure um makes this kind of issue magnified if it's not done correctly. So other things to consider, you know, these that, you know, looking at it, you know, part of it is, you know, me being here over a year now and thinking and looking and talking and, and looking at what I think is, what we should be doing in certain areas. Um some structural things that are important, I think, for us to consider. Um support teacher collaboration, do a schedule, common planning time for all grade levels and departments. I mean, that just really has to get done. I think that there needs to be, you can't expect teachers um to just have it happen organically and they just start talk, no, it's got to be a planned time structured in their day. It's got to be part of their day because that's, that's the best way for it to happen well. And they need to have those conversations about what instruction and learning is and focus on certain areas and help each other out. Look at data and then have, just like what Gail said, I mean, those are the things that need to happen district-wide in every department.
What's the, what, what are the impediments to that happening now?
Schedules, the student day. So we have a teacher day that is seven hours and fifteen minutes, yet you have a student day at the elementary that's six hours. And then you have a student day at the middle in high school that's six hours and twenty-seven minutes. I- in my mind, there's, there's some work that needs to be done there to craft a schedule and some time for teachers to get together and have those conversations. It's got to happen during the day though. That's when it has to take place. You can't expect people to meet on weekends or, you know, meet at nine o'clock at night or do it during their lunch. Uh it's got to be built into their day. Create large interrupted blocks of time in K five. Um we have extremely fragmented schedules in our elementary schools, extremely fragmented. We have kids going all over the place. Um and we need to kind of rein that in a little bit and, and make some changes there so that teachers have those large learning blocks of time to do some of this instruction, do some of this learning, do some project-based learning, and not feel like uh they're under the gun to get things done because they have to be over here, over here. They need to have, you know, ninety minutes for mathematics, ninety minutes for Language Arts instruction, uninterrupted with all kids there. So those are the kinds of things we, we got to look at. Um expand the student day pre-k as well to provide more quality instruction time. I mean, I think we, we, we got to work at that. That's something we really have to work towards so that our student day is longer and provides kids more opportunities, provides teachers more opportunities to, to do the work that they do. Um you know, we have, we have a short day at all levels. Pretty, our high school day is pretty consistent. Our middle school day is one of the shortest days in Metro West. And six hours at the elementary, I think the only other place that has that shorter day is uh Dover Sherwin.
How long are other schools?
I'm sorry?
How long are?
Six and a half, seven hours, six forty-five, yeah, a lot of those.
And we're at six?
We're at six. Yeah, in fact, I was told that you had to add ten minutes a couple of years ago because you weren't even making the minimum.
Yeah.
The minimum's nine hundred in, in elementary schools, and you weren't even making the minimum. So I mean, I think we've really got to take a hard look at that. Because we can't keep putting things in these schools and schedules without expanding the day. Something's got to give. And, you know, I kind of think that science is given at the elementary level. I think that's kind of the thing that's getting squeezed out of it.
It should be a problem at Blake, those teachers, there shouldn't be a problem at Blake, those teachers are there from seven in the morning until.
Right.
They're always there for extra help and everything.
And you know, that's some of the argument because if, if we were to expand the day, that would take away some of that time, right? Because they're, that's part of their day. Their workday is seven hours and fifteen minutes. And kids are there for six hours and twenty-seven, and then there's time in there for that kind of extra help. So that might be an argument not to expand the day at Blake. But I think you can work around that. I think there's, there's some things you can do and, and, you know, one of the things that we're looking at right now, uh Michael and I are working with Nat in the bus company. I just don't understand how, how kids get to school that early at Blake and then the, the buses get there early and then they go and wait in the gym for the bell ring. That doesn't make any sense. You know, so we're, we're kind of looking at that and, you know, you ask the question, it's, well, we've always kind of done it that way, but it, let's think about this now. We have four hundred kids in a cap, in a gymnasium for twenty minutes. I mean, that doesn't, doesn't really make sense where we can, a couple of things, parents are telling me their kids go to school too early at, at Blake, some of them. Well, maybe the, maybe we push the, maybe we push the bus room a little bit, make it so that the bus comes a little later so kids come right in the building and go right to the lockers. Or maybe we expand the day in the morning. I mean, there's all kinds of things we can look at, but we got to at least bring it to the surface and talk about it a little bit. Because I'm also sure twenty minutes in the gymnasium is good use of middle school time, you know. Um in terms of personnel, um providing content coaches that work directly with, with teachers. So we, we did that in last year's budget. We put a math coach in, working at Dale, she's fantastic, um working with the teachers. So we got to do that everywhere. So if you go around, I mean, these are no longer nice things to have. These are what everyone else has and what, what our kids deserve, what we need. So let's take a look at, you know, having coaches work directly with teachers on teachers and teaching and learning to help teachers out, work with them. Um you know, principals do that, but there's eight million other things principals are doing as well. So if you have coaches that work or split between buildings that focus on Language Arts, focusing on mathematics, and then, and do some of that assistance, i- it's no longer an isolated job. You can't just close the door and, and hope everyone does it as well as they can. And it's, it's no longer isolated. We have to do collaboration, we got to help everyone out, and, and teachers need that feedback, and they get that with a coach. And that's something we need to look at, I think. Um and then continue to provide additional professional development. It doesn't always have to cost money. Common planning time is really good professional development. It's teachers getting together, having conversations about instructional learning. It doesn't get much better than that if you, if you're doing it well. You know, you have meeting minutes, you have norms, you have goals, and what you're trying to do as a group, that's really good professional development. It doesn't have to cost twenty-five thousand dollars for an outside expert to come in and then leave on a plane and we never see them again. It doesn't have to be that way. So those are just some of the, the things that came to mind as we kind of look at this and, in the direction, you know, you hear the, the other terms, professional learning communities. You hear that an awful lot, and, you know, I've been fortunate enough to be a part of a, of a school district that went in that direction and saw the results. And I think it could work really, really well here. And there's pockets of it, and our teachers are doing really good pockets, but if it becomes what we do as a district, then you start to see the results, not only on this, but the district. But I think, you know, one of the things you look at the test, what separates a good district from a great district is the good district has really good MCAS scores everywhere. So grades three to grades ten, the great districts have them throughout. The good districts have, you know, great, grade tens and, and great in pockets. And, excuse me, good in pockets, but the great ones have it throughout. So if you look at the globe rankings, and you, again, you see some of these charter schools that are thrown in, which in my mind should be thrown out of the rankings. But you look at school districts, you look at the district rankings, and you see the ones that consistently, grades three, four, five, six, seven, all the way to ten, are always in the top twenty, always in the top thirty. They're doing a lot of things well there, a lot of things well. And that's, you know, that's the kind of goal that we need to be at, is getting, getting to be a great district where you do well throughout the entire district, not just one population of kids. Areas we got to focus on, certainly student growth numbers, I think you saw some of those pockets where, you know, fifty's average, and we saw some forties, we saw some thirties in there. Um but we also saw some great ones. We saw some, some sixties, seventies, and eighties. We want to replicate, replicate that throughout the entire district to get those growth numbers up there. Uh writing, I think, district-wise, statewide, everywhere is writing. That's an issue that I think everyone needs to work on. And uh we tend to lose points in Medfield and probably everywhere else in the state on some of the writing problems and some of that. So we got to keep continually working on that. Mathematics, you see the trend is going where we want it to go, but certainly we need to do some more work on there. And then supporting our at-risk kids. So you see some of the things, uh I think in the paper you saw where there's level one schools, level two schools, level four, all these little. So Medfield has always been a level two district, always. And um it's really tied to our subgroup data of kids. So there's, there's subgroups that, once we get all this test scores, they disaggregate that data into all different subgroups. So there's, there's white students, Hispanic students, uh students with disabilities, uh low income, you name it. They can, they disaggregate it in all different levels. And um until you make those target improvements in all those levels, you're not going to be a level one district. And if you have a one school in your district that is not level one, then you become what that level is. So we have two level one schools right now. So they don't do it for Memorial because it's not MCAS. We洛克 is level one, and the high school is level one. The other two schools are level two. And basically, it comes down to our subgroup data. So our, our low-income students and our students with special needs, we're not making the targets for those kids. And I think that's an area that we really need to do better at and support our at-risk kids because there's a target that they have to hit when they look at the data, and we're just not making the target for those kids and those. We're not making the target universally, but especially in those schools, we got to really, really focus on.
And why do you think that is? Like what, has anyone come up with anything so far?
If, if you look at the data statewide, um the who's who of, of schools like us are in level two. A lot of them are level two because of um these subgroups. Not all the subgroups are making, are making the, the, the improvements that they should make or meeting the targets they should make.
So it seems like that's a conversation that we've had before, um and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but like that we don't hit the mark with some of the students that are special needs. And it's, it seems like if it's, if it keeps reoccurring, why aren't we addressing that?
Oh, I think we are. I mean, I think, I absolutely think we are. You know, there's always room for improvement. I'm not saying we're, we're the model district right now, but we're, we're definitely attacking that and, and providing supports for kids. I think what we're doing now is starting younger with, with the recent, um, the RTI stuff where, you know, we're looking at response intervention. We're trying to make those supports, interventions for kids younger. And I think I had that on the slide last year, where I said we have to do a better job at identifying some of these things younger and then providing them with support. Um and I think again, I don't want to keep going back to this, but I think full-day kindergarten is another area that you start to identify those very early, provide those interventions early, and by the time kids get to third grade, they're, they're doing much better. So when you, you miss out on that year.
Right.
You know, that, that's a big, a big deal, especially when reading is so critical in kids' life in first grade. And if you miss that target there, and now you're, you're trying to address in first grade what you could have addressed in kindergarten, it just takes that much longer. You know, so it's really that early intervention piece is really important for us. But I think, you know, it's, it's staffing, it's, it's a lot of things, you know, especially. But I think, you know, it's staffing, it's a lot of things, you know, especially. But I think our staff does a good job of that and we could always do better.
Just a question about the school day again.
Yep.
I'm just kind of curious, how is that mandated? Is that teacher contract or is that state? It's obviously not state mandated since everyone's got a different medical day.
So the state mandates two things, nine hundred and ninety hours, excuse me, nine hundred hours for elementary, nine hundred and ninety for elementary, for high school, and then one hundred and eighty days. So those are the two mandates, the minimum mandates that the state gives. So anything out of that is additional that the local school district can decide.
Make decisions on that.
So, you know, there's contract implications too, you know, the teacher workday versus the student workday and that kind of thing. I think it's something we'd have to look at really closely and how we would approach that. And it needs to be a really, you know, really good conversation with everyone that's impacted by it, parents, teachers, you know, administrators, but really technically, it can't be something we just may, you know, we ever want to do, unfortunately, wish we could.
Seems like it would be a very big deal.
Yeah, it's a lot, it's a lot of work. I told the story when I was, we were at some committee meeting and when I was a principal about fourteen years ago, we extended the school day a half hour. And we extended the school day a half hour because we were bringing foreign languages so that that way it didn't impact everything else. You know, so I think that's what we've got to kind of look at is if we're going to have these great programs, we got to make room for it as well in the school day.
Yeah, because right now at Dale, they're having the kids come in earlier to do bands, which they've never done before.
Right, right.
So I think in some ways it's good, but definitely, you know, it's...
It impacts families, no doubt about it.
Right.
No doubt about it.
But if you had a kid through Dale, like I honestly cannot remember the science, with all due respect to my great teachers there, but science curriculum was...
No, I mean, because I went to the parent night at Dale and I think they're only doing science twice a week, science twice a week, social studies twice a week, which doesn't seem like really enough.
But I think if you have everything else that they have in there and their schedule, it's really tough to fit it all in there.
And then we've added foreign languages.
Right.
Right. Their schedule is impossible. I don't know how they do their schedule.
It's pretty fragmented.
Their kids flying all over the place all the time.
I had a conversation with a teacher a few weeks ago who told me that on Mondays. She has her whole class of twenty-one kids for forty-five minutes on Mondays, that's it, because they're all doing other things. And I think we just got to rein in a little bit and look at it differently and try to get those blocks of time for teachers for instruction. And then if we expand the day, it provides room for a lot of other opportunities for kids.
And this may tie into also the busing that is going to, hopefully.
Right.
Yeah.
It all ties in, absolutely.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, want to ask the audience if they have any questions?
Sure.
Want to have any questions in the audience?
Actually, I have one question.
Okay.
For the, actually, the comment you made about the gift, the gifts from the various groups. So I'm just trying to figure out the mechanism to communicate that information to all of you guys. Because MMA, we just approved twenty-five thousand dollars in funding to the district for the music program. So I just don't know how, like, what's the mechanism? Should I email you guys?
So if you email Michael F. Francesca and CC me on that, then we'll put that on the next agenda, so that it becomes an agenda item.
Okay.
That's great, thank you.
We, most of you know I served on another school committee and it was a good opportunity for the folks who are making significant gifts to come in and sort of let us know why they appreciated what we're doing, why they were making the gift and give us an opportunity to publicly thank them. So I think it's a good idea to move that.
No, it's great.
Thank you. So Reloc Boiler, we have a meeting this Thursday with the project designer, the architect, and the actual construction company to take a look at that. We're not thinking it's going to be a huge issue. It's a fairly small project in terms of MSBA. They just want to physically see the space. They haven't seen it yet. They've only read about it through our statement of interest. So they're coming in at eleven o'clock on Thursday to give us a sense of what they think the scope of the project is going to be. So we have to submit, I think, two more, three more items to them and then we'll be presenting at the January meeting at MSBA. And that will, you know, they'll either say, yes, we're funding your project, or no thanks. All indications have been very positive and I think for them to come out as they're coming out on Thursday, again, another positive sign. So we're looking forward to that meeting on Thursday. I have a really good sense at a November meeting of what direction we're heading and what the costs are going to be and the implications, et cetera. But we're still on track for a presentation at the January meeting and then going to the annual town meeting in April to ask for the funding on that project. So that's where we're at.
Right now, discussions with the town and the Warren Committee, we think there's not going to be a exclusion required for that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Town has two point seven million dollars of free cash right now. It's not certified yet, but that's what I was told that is in there for free cash.
Great.
Which is more than last year. And last year was a lot, at two point six. They hadn't had over many years, so just healthy free cash there.
Good. District recognition?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things I want to recognize. We've had our Chinese visitors here for the last couple of weeks. We had a very nice lunch with them today and they're actually heading back on Wednesday, which has been a really, really quick visit for them. They were saying that they wish they could stay longer. They've had a wonderful time in district and we spent some time at lunch today trying to figure out what the next step is in terms of the partnership. So we're looking at either the fall of two thousand fifteen or the spring of two thousand sixteen to send students and teachers from Medfield to Bungbo. So that's our plan right now. They would like it sooner, but, you know, one of the things that we let them know about was if they go in the fall, they miss a lot of school. We have kids in the fall where if we wrap it around, April vacation, it's a longer period for them to go, they don't miss as much school. So then they started laughing and said, well, that's why we're here now, because we just had a week's vacation in October. So, you know, we're working on the same wavelength on that, but they've been great. And I know Anna May, if you want to add anything, since you've been being a gracious host, but...
Yes, no, it's been a wonderful experience. Last night, we had the farewell dinner and the Nineteen Gills hosted it. And she wrote a beautiful email this morning. She said because of this experience, she's made new friends and just established warm relations with the Chinese and also other Medfield families who were, you know, who are hosts as well. So it's been really great. And I need to commend Elaine Liu because she organized the Confucius Classroom Evening last, this past Wednesday, which was...
You're taking one off my list, that's...
Oh, sorry.
Perfect.
But it was so well-attended and it was really a high caliber show, dragon dance, someone played the arhu and some other Chinese instruments and martial art demonstration. So it was really fantastic. And it was just, it was great for the kids to see that, you know, it's more than just learning the language, it's a culture. So it was great.
Thank you. It was great. It was a great night. And that was part of the Confucius Grant that we've had here for the last five or six years and that was the celebration of the tenth year of the Confucius Classroom. So all the performers came from Boston. As Anna May knows, they did traditional lion dance that they did. As part of it, they gave me a gift, which was a head of cabbage. So I'm kind of afraid to throw it away. I've been researching, it means prosperity and riches, so I've been researching and there's no direction on what to do after you get this gift. So we're holding on to the Marsden House right now and I guess once it rots, we'll get rid of it, but we still have it.
We can cook it.
Right, yeah. Keep it in the freezer.
Go Korean and make kimchi.
That's right, that's right. Yeah. Oh, the freezer. It's a good idea. So thank you for that, Anna May. Last Friday night was really interesting, I had a football game. We celebrated the fiftieth anniversary of the nineteen sixty-four undefeated team and many of the players came back for that day and we had a nice celebration for them at halftime and it was just really, really neat. They got to speak to our kids. We had a, we hired a bus for them to come in from the Legion and they had a escort from the police and fire department. It was really neat. So they appreciated, we had a couple come from California, some came from down south. So they really reconnected and they got a tour of Medfield where they saw so many different things, like brothers and Starbucks and all these places that they hadn't seen in a long time. So it was really neat. So I want to thank the police department, the fire department for that, and then Selectman Richard Disor did a really good job at halftime as a master of ceremonies for that. So that was really neat. And then the DPW has a ribbon-cutting ceremony this Saturday at eleven o'clock and you're all invited to that. So please, if you can, if you can get to that, please do that. It's going to be from ten to three, the celebration, but the ribbon-cutting will be at eleven. There's also something that I would give to you, I don't know if I brought it on. I did. Town Council has provided this document for all boards, open meeting law, possible adoption of remote participation. So they're looking at possibly having an adoption of a remote participation where if you are away on business or you can't be at the meeting, that you can remotely participate in that meeting. So just when we thought we got rid of Chris on some business trips, he might be skyping in to...
Yes, because when I'm on business, that's what I'm dying to do.
So I'll just have a copy, please take it when you leave. And that's, the town asked us to do that. And then lastly, I just, on a personal note, I just want to recognize Kathy Leader for her help in leadership. She, tonight is her last meeting and she certainly helped me an awful lot in my transition to Medfield and she actually stayed a little bit longer than she was anticipated, which is much appreciated by me and everyone else. So thank you and I want to wish her well. Certainly, we're all sad, but we're happy for her to enjoy the Cape more often and what she wants to is at these weekends and I'm sure Bill's very happy as well, so we appreciate it. So thank you, Kathy.
Do you want, let's just run it through public input and future agenda items, something we'll more formally recognize Kathy. Is this time we set aside for public input?
Sure.
May I address it?
Sure, if you just let us, state your name and your address.
Chuck Bickley, Seventh Philip Street. I'm a neighbor across from the high school athletic field. I'm here to ask you a question. The storage facility that you put out there, it looks like a container from a cargo ship, I think, is where it came from. Jeff and I have gone back and forth on this a number of times and I've talked to the Selectman about it. I'd like you to remove it. Architecturally, it doesn't fit and before, it wasn't even complying to town bylaws for building permit. But that's not the main reason. Those two reasons, architecturally, it looks awful. And it's not something I'm proud of, it's not something I can find any neighbors that are proud of. And so my question is, would you remove it?
Mr. Bickley, we appreciate you coming and we have, certainly Dr. Marsden has kept us up to date on the correspondence and I think we've had some correspondence from you directed to us. We, as a school committee, have limited authority and telling the school department what to do and how to allocate its resources in that way is actually beyond it. And as a matter of policy, we can't take up a vote without an item on the agenda. But even if we could, this is not an item that we, as a committee, can vote on. We do, we're aware of the issue, I think all of us are, and are aware of some efforts to address it. And we appreciate you coming and this is the second time you've been here. We appreciate your patience, sitting through these meetings. You're one of the few and the proud who's done so.
They've been great meetings. I'm sorry I haven't seen them over the years because my kids went through the school system and, you know, it's always been a great time. So it's been very interesting for me, so I have enjoyed it. And I don't come here in animosity, I'm just, it's just something that I would like to see done and it just doesn't fit. I mean, we spent millions of dollars on our new school and it's beautiful and it's a nice facility there and we enjoy the activity that goes on on weekends and during the week. And we don't want to see that change, but we'd sure like to see something nicer for our storage facility that fits with the area.
We certainly, we certainly understand. We'd like, frankly, love to have, be able to have the money to build a appropriate storage facility, you know, more squarely within our grounds. All I can say at this point is that we certainly hear, I've heard what, you know, your position and we know the status of the issue and, again, we really appreciate you coming forward. But it's not something we can vote on as a matter of...
No, I guess I'm not asking to vote on it, but if you could do something about it, keep it in mind, I know, I know you know about it. Do what you can to do something better. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you going to update on that or?
I believe you have one.
I just have a quick update on that. So I know that you've seen the emails that Mr. Bickley sent and we've kind of, we had a couple of meetings and you've gone back and forth via email. So one of the things that we looked at, I guess the whole impetus of putting that structure there was we had an old storage building that was wood that was really not safe, that was right next to the snack shack. So we took that down all the summer. And then we ended up putting a forty-foot storage unit along, you know, along our property line close to Philip Street. But after, you know, talking with Mr. Bickley and then reconsidering kind of what we did and how it looks and all that, we're removing the forty-foot unit there and we're putting a twenty-foot unit in the footprint of the old storage shack. So it's actually going to be in the same footprint of the one that we took down and it's not going to be right alongside so that when Mr. Bickley looks out the window, it's not where it is now, which is, it's a big unit where it is now, forty feet, it's a big unit. So we cut that essentially in half and just put it in the same footprint that was the existing old building that was a little rickety. So it's going to go right next to the snack shack. I believe it's happening tomorrow or Wednesday. But, I mean, that was, certainly heard his perspective on that and understand it and we tried to make that a combination because we still needed to, we still need a place to put what we need to put in terms of our athletic equipment and other things there. So we thought that was a reasonable combination to cut it down and to move it next to the existing footprint, so.
But it's still a storage container of, like, gray metal?
Correct.
Why didn't you look at something like we did for the officials that run the game up there, you know, that facility that was built by, I think, one of the tech schools? You know, all we did is provide some material and they built it.
I think you're speaking of the press box up by the...
Yeah.
No, it wasn't, you know, something that we, we had the money or the time, we needed to get it done quickly because we knocked down the other structure and, you know, we hope that this one will be, will be a better fit for, for the community.
Do you have the permission to paint it?
Absolutely.
Is it paintable?
It is.
I'm just wondering whether the art students might be able to do something to make it more attractive.
It's a great idea.
Anything else for public input?
Okay.
Come on. Have you read the Chaco Word?
Not in my time.
All right, well...
I actually pulled up the Spark Notes.
Did you?
It reminds me.
In the future, we're going to, coming upcoming agendas, we need to talk in a little more depth about the education evaluation system. As you all know, that's been something we've been rolling out. It's a lot of work, a lot of work's gone into it among both the teachers and the administrators. I think it will change a lot of the way we do business administratively. Also, further update on the boiler replacement, talk a little more about FY sixteen budget. budget. We do need to vote soon the FY15, '16 school calendar, so if you can circulate that a little ahead of time. We usually take two minutes, two meetings for that, right?
Was that like January, February this year?
The school calendar?
Oh, we started early.
Is that early?
Yeah. End of the fiscal year report, final end of the fiscal year report, and discussion of school lunch pricing, which should be an interesting discussion.
Yes.
Before we go down the line, as, as has been alluded to, tonight is Kathy's last meeting, and that was an excellent example, very good segue, because there's so much that goes on in these meetings and in this entire district that nobody knows the answer to except Kathy, and I hope that she's got a cellphone.
She has a cellphone.
Because when they say she knows where all the bodies are buried, she knows, she knows that and, and how they got there and where the shovels are stored. And so, I, I, you know, I feel a little self-conscious giving Kathy a plaque for recognizing 37 years of outstanding service and dedication to Medfield Public Schools, because certainly 37 years of service deserves more than that, but, you know, this is, as Kathy knows better than anybody, what we have the resources to do. But I, I just want to say personally, you know, I've, I've been on the committee four or five years now, and there hasn't been an issue or, or discussion that has come up where somebody, the superintendent, the business manager, hasn't, hasn't had to turn to Kathy at some point and say, what do we do about that? So, you know, we'll welcome Francine more formally going forward, but good luck with that. The most important thing about Kathy to me is, yeah, is that throughout all of it, and she's always, despite the fact that she's now in, in central office, kept in mind that this is a school district and, and kids come first, and this is something, you know, we, we've always heard from our superintendents, but you don't often hear somebody say that, you know, the, the support staff keep that in mind. But I think Kathy is a, has been a sort of a guiding star, north star for the district in that regard, and so we really appreciate everything you've done. I'm sure we're gonna go down the line, everybody can, thank you. Can't, can't stop it. So, I, but, you know, we will truly miss you and all you've done for us, and more importantly, for 37 years of kids coming through the district.